Hold on, David Sidney. Okay, Ed, go ahead.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Library Board of Trustees of the City of Palm Springs Public Library. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure, Craig Borba.
Present.
David Kelly.
Here.
Ed McBride.
Here.
Kathy Warmick.
Here.
All present and accounted for.
Thank you. So Jeannie, do we need to have a change to the agenda to talk about the promissory note?
We, yes, if you all want to. One moment.
Let's put it down that we're going to talk about it and decide what we're going to do next.
So that'll be a change to the agenda?
Yes.
I'll move that we make a change to the agenda.
Second.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Okay, one moment. Hold on, I'm sorry. Trying to get, David Sidney's trying to get on to the meeting. Okay, so we're going to add the discussion of the promissory note draft document that we just received. And so roll call on the met motion was by Craig Borba. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, where on the agenda do you want that at?
I guess we will put it. Discussion action items, number seven. So we'll make it seven G.
Okay, I accept that amendment.
And who made the second? I'm sorry.
Kathy did.
Okay. Okay, so roll call would be Craig Borba.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Ed McBride.
Yes.
Kathy Warmick.
Yes.
Four to zero passed.
Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda for anyone?
Yeah, I'd like to, I assume that you're going to ask about the consent calendar, so I'd like to move that the minutes get pulled from the consent.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I think you can just do it as chair.
Okay, we'll pull those off then. Anything else?
All the minutes, David, or just one set?
Actually, just the minutes from the June regular meeting, not the special meeting.
June 3rd.
Okay, anything else?
Okay, with the, with the exception of four A, I move that we accept four B, four C.
That's it.
Second.
In favor?
I.
I'll roll call. Craig Borba. Craig Borba?
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Ed McBride.
Yes.
Kathy Warmick.
Yes.
Okay, that was four to zero passed.
Okay, so let's go back up to number three, any public comments?
No, we don't have any public comments.
Just did number four. So at this point, trustee Kelly, you wanted to discuss the meeting minutes of June 3rd, correct?
Yeah, I'm looking for my copy, sorry. Messy here. Okay, so the item. Let's see. It was seven B, it's on page seven of the packet. I'd like, it says in the last part of the last, of the first paragraph, the last sentence in the first paragraph, it says, "This draft was written after Treasurer Kelly wrote an email to Nancy Polly asking if the library endowment is part of the city's reserves, and he did not get a response from her. I'd like to amend that to say that he did not get the assurances he was seeking."
But you did get a response from her, is what you're saying, right?
I don't recall what the response was, but I imagine there was some response I got, but it wasn't the assurances I was seeking.
Okay.
I'd move the, is that the only item you want to change?
Yes.
Let me move the minutes of June 3rd, 2020 with the change that David Kelly requested.
One moment, Craig Borba's not on right now. So we should wait for him. I'm going to pause recording.
See, Warmick, please repeat the, the motion, please.
Yes, my motion was that I moved the minutes of June 2nd, 2020 with the changes that David Kelly suggested.
June 3rd.
June 3rd, I'm sorry.
And Craig, Craig, were you on for the request?
No, I didn't get to hear it, so I'm going to have to abstain.
So if you go to page seven of your packet, it says, "In the minutes of June 3rd, seven B, first paragraph, last sentence, this draft was written after Treasurer Kelly wrote an email to Nancy Polly asking if the library endowment is part of the city's reserves, and he did not get a response from her. I wanted to strike a response from her and replace it with the assurances he was seeking."
Okay, great. Thank you. We have a roll call for that?
No, I have a motion, but I don't have a second.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Craig Borba?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Ed McBride? Kathy Warmick?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Back to our agenda. Sorry, I. In my haste to get organized, I put the wrong sheet here. I'm sorry, guys. Here it is. All right, so our next item is administrative reports. So do we have a report for the friends?
The friends are not on here, but what I will say is that today we just picked up our grant check from the Anderson Children's Foundation in the amount of eleven, $11,500 for summer reading for our Books for Kids project. So that was a great thing for the friends. And I think they're just same thing as last time, just hanging out, waiting for us to get to a reopen spot.
Just recently, would you like to make a report of the foundation?
Yeah. I would just like to say that since the last time we met, which wasn't that long ago, we formed a fundraising committee. We, our finance committee met for the first time to discuss forming the endowment. And we are getting ready to liquidate, liquidate an asset to form the endowment. And we are going to interview one new board member candidate. So we are very busy. And that's it.
A question?
Any questions for David?
Yes, hi, David. So the, they, just for clarification, the asset that you're liquidating, I imagine, is the annuity? Right. Okay, thank you.
Yep. David, you interviewed a board candidate, and we have a new one, right? So we have two in process, correct?
I thought we had one.
Who are you thinking?
The guy from today.
Jim Hopkins, and we interviewed Melissa the other day, right?
Oh, my God, two, yes, oh, my God. Sorry, we interviewed two new candidates and two really exciting ones, forgive me.
Can you, Melissa is from Buzz Factory, right?
Right, right, and she's super excited and she's all fired up, and I'm embarrassed, I forgot about her. And I think she'd be a great asset to the board. She's a, she's great.
And Jim Hopkins is an attorney here in town, correct?
I believe so.
Great, great work. I mean, I think your, your goal is to double the size of the board by the end of, what, 2020?
Yeah. Yeah.
Working on it, at least.
We know they're all, we know where to find them.
All right, so Jeannie, library staff report? You're on mute.
Yes, I know, I had to find the button. Okay, so the library, even though we're closed, we're still active and doing things. We have our summer reading. Hold on, I thought of one more thing.
By the way, I saw the TV commercial this morning.
Oh, good. I'm going to show it. If I, I'm going to share my screen and show you the video of the TV commercial.
It was right during the morning news, it was great.
Good, good timing. So summer reading's going great. We have 793 people signed up, which is wonderful. We're in week four, it's a six-week program, so there are only a couple more weeks, but there is still plenty of time to register and even do the reading to earn the rewards. So the breakdown of the 793, we have for youth, 432 signups. Teens, we have 187 signups, and adults, we have 174. All of those readers combined have logged 50,377 minutes of reading. And we still, like I said, we still have more time, there's time to earn your rewards and earn badges to earn tickets to enter for the grand prizes. The grand prizes are, we're giving away four bicycles, a Nintendo Switch Lite with the game Animal Crossing, a $50 Amazon gift card, and a Kindle Fire tablet. So all of the age groups can compete to earn tickets to win the grand prizes. And then we'll do a big drawing after summer reading is over. And as you go along and earn badges and earn rewards, your reading is what counts to earn books. So you read four hours, I believe rightly, so I think it's four hours. 240 minutes, and so you read 240 minutes, and that earns you the reward to get five free books. And that's what the grant money is paying for from the Anderson Children's Foundation. It's to get, earn book packs. So they get five books for their age group from Scholastic, they're really nice books. Very age appropriate and, and just lovely books. So we're happy about that. Summer reading going great. Library a-go-go, our pickup service is doing great. We've had, in the month of June, we had 1,068 appointments. So we've had a lot of people come to the library. I mean, it's not our door count, 20,000, but it's 1,000, so that's wonderful. We've had, we've checked out 7,000 physical items, and that does include renewals. So it's not, it's not exactly items leaving the building, but it's some that have already gone and they're renewing. So we've checked out 7,000 items in June. So we're very happy about that, and we're still doing that service, and we've expanded it so that it's open. So pickup services have opened six days a week. We will be closed this Saturday for 4th of July, Independence Day. So no pickups will be happening that day. But you can cut, you can make your appointments, you can make your reservations, place your holds. Holds are expanded up to 15 items now, so you can get up to 15 items at one time. We had started with just five. So people can get more, get more stuff. And then one thing I want to let people know about, I just thought about this today. We've got our accessing the past online digital archive. And there's a project that you can do as a participant, you can create a login and, and do user text correction. So when we scan, the Desert Sun is one of the databases, and then our high school yearbooks and telephone books are our local archive. They're two separate systems, so you can log into both and create an account for both. But when they scan those newspapers especially, they've got the, their, their old, the microfilm's really old, and the fonts are really, you know, classic, they're old fonts. And so the computer goes through and does a user, an optical character recognition. And so it, it, that's what, when it does keyword searching, it's based on that computer-generated text. And sometimes the computer can't read the text that's in the newspaper, because the newspaper might have been, have scratched, or the fonts real swirly. And so people can go in and you can create an account and then go in and fix that for us. And if you're at home looking for something to do, this is a great way to help us. And it's a rabbit hole, you can go down and just spend your, your days doing this. I know there's even a project, not us, but there's another project where you can, you can transcribe the teletype, I don't know if those things called T-mail, but telegraphs. So when the telegraph operators hand wrote the Civil War telegraphs, those have been digitized. And that's another project out there in the world that you can go and, and transcribe those handwritten things. But for us, you can go and help us with our Desert Sun newspaper, or our yearbooks, our phone books, and correct that so that when people do searching, they'll be able to find the stuff they're looking for. So that's a fun project, something that you can do at home. And I think that people are kind of looking for stuff to do if you're at home and want something to do, go do that for us, because that'd be fun. And I'm happy to answer questions. That's my report.
Any questions for Jeannie?
Actually, I do. Jeannie, in the package, you put in page 16, it says, "Library Statistics", and it seems like you were actually reading off a lot of statistics that were for June. Did you want to refer back to this, what you put in the package, was there something in there that was subnote that you put it in the packet?
Well, we put the, we put the statistics in every month for you. Because our meeting is on the first, we don't have time to run, run statistics right away. So that's why your statistics are delayed. But that's a good point. In May, we, we did have, we did have a kind of a small circulation, but the eBooks were really, they were up 47%. So we circulated 5,400 downloadables, the eBooks, and issued 107 library cards. And then we even had 67 Wi-Fi sessions. I know that wasn't me, but maybe some people getting up against the building for Wi-Fi access. And I'm looking into, hopefully, trying to get some more Wi-Fi ports closer to the windows so that maybe we can boost the signal and get some Wi-Fi in our parking lot. Because I know people would really value that. I know if you're on a limited data plan or something, you would love that free Wi-Fi. You can't just really go into a Starbucks anymore and sit down, or come to the library and sit down. Good question. Craig, you're on mute or your phone, just go ahead.
Okay.
I heard you. Access to the computers for the public, is that what you asked? The city council last night, they talked, they had their meeting last night, and right towards the end, they were talking about different COVID-related topics and access to the city's facilities. They're not thinking that they're going to do that anytime soon. So we're part of that, and with all, with the spike in cases, it's just, they, it's just too much of a risk. We also, if we do reopen, we might consider doing an appointment system, which I've already been working on, because we have the appointment system for our Library a-go-go pickup and, and summer reading pickup. I've already got a little template done for people to come in and use computers. Obviously, they wouldn't have a computer to make the appointment, but we could do that over the phone, or we could, we can do that for them. And an appointment mode for browsing the collection and getting books. So nothing yet, but looking into the, trying to boost our Wi-Fi as a solution, at least to get some Wi-Fi into people. And then one thing that we have that we're going to promote more is our Wi-Fi printing. So if people need to print, and there aren't place, if they have a computer, like, let's say you have a laptop or you have a smartphone, you can use your smartphone or tablet. If you get an attachment in your email and you want to print it like a PDF, we have the capability for you to send that to us through the internet, through our printer-on system, and then you can come to the library during our pickup and print that. And so we could handle that and, and get people printing if they needed it. So we would have, we're working on getting the Wi-Fi, and then we have the printing capabilities now. So it's just the people without physical computers. But you know, if you're, if it's for children, all, every Palm Springs Unified School District child has a Chromebook. And if that family didn't have internet, they were sent home with a mobile hotspot. So every child in, in our school district has access to internet and a computer. But obviously, there are lots of adults that might not have that resource.
Ed, you're on mute.
Just noticed that. So any other questions for Jeannie? Thank you.
Jeannie, I know you're not going to open that quickly, but you sent us a memo regarding what you would do when you do open. Are we at that on the agenda?
Not yet.
Next.
Sorry.
Pressures report, so trustee Kelly, do you have anything you would like to share with us?
Yeah. You can hear me, right? So going again to page 10, our dear old reliable page 10, where we look at the cash balance of $1,932,701.18. I don't think I have too many questions about this report this time. I know if you recall, in June, Jeannie actually presented some adjustments because of the Friends of the Palm Springs Library. I think if you kind of look. What was I looking at? If you look at page 12, that's where the issue was before. So about a little ways down, the third item on that list is Friends of the Palm Springs Library. So for the, the second column after the budget, the, the column after the budget where it says period expenditures, there's, there's no expenditure this time for the Friends of the Library. And if you go to the year-to-date expenditures, which is one, two, three, fourth column of those numbers, and you see that $6,023.80, that's the numbers that I believe Jeannie had actually reversed out. The only question I have now is that, and the next column after that was 300. So I've got back to about December, I, in the December statement, there, that $300 was all by itself. So actually, Jeannie, actually, I need to get this page for however months before that $300 showed up. So somewhere between July, which I believe is the beginning of our fiscal year, and December, that 300 showed up. So it might be that there's one more that needs to be reversed out of here, I'm not entirely certain.
That 300 is the amount that they had budgeted for that account number. So each one of these items on the left has a budget, and that's what the, the finance department sets up. It used to be 100.
I would have thought that too, except when I did look, and I believe it was a December statement, I don't, I have all these pieces of paper in front of me, so I can't tell you. But the December statement actually had an expenditure of $300 in it. So, and that's very similar to these other amounts. So I just need to know, it could be the budget, I don't know. Actually, let me correct that. The $300 didn't show up as an expenditure in December. I'm actually, I was actually looking for a $300 expenditure. But I understand what you're saying about this budget thing, although it still would be helpful to have the prior month just to make sure that it really is just a budget figure. I don't, the way I've been noticing this account moving is that there really, we've never really set a budget for the friends. And the only thing that made it move was when monies were expended in that, somewhere in that column. So I just need to get some of these reports from November.
Hold on, I'll show you, let me, let me share my screen with you, I ran the report right now. What usually happens, okay. So I ran an audit of that line item, the 44051 Friends of the Library.
This is, this is the statement that you showed us in the June statement.
Yeah, so it showed up in September, September 23rd. Let me see if I can make this bigger.
And so that figure that you have here for $6,023.80 matches what I have here on page, did I say 10 before? Page 12, actually, of the packet.
Yeah, so for some reason.
You'll see this cumulative balance of 300 here in the last column that you're showing.
Yeah. So what happens is every year they post a budget amount for that account, just to keep, just to keep that account alive, of $100.
Okay.
You see my highlight? And then, and then I don't know why, but they created this budget adjustment for 200. And I don't, I don't know, not sure what that is, but it's, it's your money. And so what we will do when this fiscal year rolls is that we can bring this back down to 100. The 200 goes back into your cash account. So we can, this should just be like 100, it should just always just be 100, because that's what it always has been every year that I've worked here.
Right, so, and you know.
100 in there to keep it open.
And maybe if you do have something handy to show us. Because, you know, if I look at the cash balances, pardon me, from, that I just reported for the, the current period, and the prior month's cash balance, that $6,000, I don't know where exactly that's showing up.
The, the way that though, the Friends money, it doesn't go into your cash balance. That, that one month that there was a mistake was the only time that it ever affected your cash balance. The money for the Friends book sales goes into a different account, it's, it's 15134510, which it's not listed. So it's 34510, which is a revenue account for the Friends. So it goes into that account, and then used, in the past, what we did was we just cut a check off of that account. So it's not affect your cash over here, and then the Friends money would go over here. And then we would just cut a check from here, and it would go out. But what they said now is we're doing it wrong, so we need to put it into the Friends expenditure account down here, and then cut the check. So it won't hit your cash account ever. And the only time, the only reason why it was ever a mistake is because they pulled money from your cash account to issue the check to the Friends. So it was just a mistake.
Duly note that and try to explain it at the annual report.
I know, it's, it's annoying, isn't it? I'm sorry.
Other than that, I think the, the other items that we might discuss are going to come up and later on in the agenda. So I will say thank you for giving me the moment to give a report.
Thank you. Questions for trustee Kelly? All right, so let's move on to our discussion items. First thing is the budget. I listened last night and to the bitter end. So you want to give us an update on, on what happened as of last night with the budget?
Yes, so the city passed the budget. Yes. So the city passed the budget. So happy that that we've, we've made it through the fiscal year and we're starting again. So whether, I mean, not, you know, you how, how happy can you be about the budget, but relieved that we're moving on. So our, our operating budget did get cut. It went from, I wonder if I can, let me share this screen with you. It's a really, it's, the numbers are tiny. So I'm just going to share it and I'll zoom in. Maybe. Okay, you guys seeing that? Okay, so our, over here on this side, our adopted budget was 2. down here at the bottom, 2.687900. And then with the revisions, we're down to 2.3 million dollars, which is a cut of $318,000. So most of that came from our operating expenses, our book budgets and supplies and things like that. So our, our budget now is $384,225. And some of the accounts, we have bigger account, bigger cuts out of things like our, our book budget. And so we lost $61,000 out of our book budget and $55,000 out of our AV media DVDs and whatnot, and about half of our events budget. So I'm going to stop sharing that. And we're, we're optimistic that we can get this through. I don't have, I don't have a request for you yet because this just happened last night. So I want, I want some time to process this and and have have the next month, you know, I, I am guessing that we're going to be dark next month. That's on our agenda to talk about. But we'll see how our, how our budget is laid out and what, what we're going to need. And and then come back to the Friends and the trustees and and make requests at that time.
That's pretty much in line with what we've done in the past. Our budget, we start working on in September, October, right, in the past. So you come to us in September, then we should be able to formulate our budget in October, right?
Yeah, yeah. And this is, this is good for us. We'll get this going. The one thing that I'm actually relieved about is that our, our databases are still funded. So that's really good for us right now, especially with a lot of people accessing our e-resources, that we still got the funding for those and didn't have to. We cut a couple just because we didn't have any use on those and they were out of the Wellwood, Wellwood budget. But for the most part, we're keeping our databases, ones that are being used and are popular.
So do you feel like that, I mean, the cuts are deep, they do hurt, but the good news is that you do have the Friends, we've got the trust fund, we have some other ways that we can replace this money. Talk, do you mind talking a little bit about the staff impacted the, in the cuts you had to the personnel budget?
Yeah, just one second. We had, so our total cut, it looks like we lose 12% off of our, our total budget was cut 12%. So we did lose Julie, our library services public relations manager position. That is going to be an impact to us. So we're gonna, we're gonna work through that and find new ways to do things, find new, new people who could step up and and take on the tasks. And we did write a grant, so we'll see if, if we get the grant, but you know, or if the economy comes back. So we're gonna, we're gonna proceed and we, one of the things that happened, you know, we were going to lose two library pages too, but one of our library assistants who worked for us for 26 years decided that it was time to retire. And so we were able to save the two library pages positions with her salary savings. So that, that was a little change at the last minute to save those positions.
So all in all, you lost one. Plus, did you have anybody, did you have any open positions that you had to give up?
Well, with this library assistant, the part-time library assistant retiring, technically, we are giving up that position. So we're giving up a part-time library assistant and and then the PR position. We're still, we didn't lose our hours. We didn't lose our days of the week. So we're open. When we're open, we're open six days a week. Our hours didn't get reduced. We're happy about that.
And you're able to cover those hours when you reopen with the staff complement that you have now, correct?
Yes.
All my questions. Anybody else have any questions for Jeannie?
No questions.
No, it's good news that you, that we, that you retained as many positions as you did.
Yeah, we're, we're, the Wellwood will not be open. We're closed now anyway, but the Wellwood budget was slashed tremendously too. And that eliminates the possibility to open right now. So we're just, we're just going to keep that building closed. We're closed now anyway, but we're going to keep that building closed. And the service, like, one thing that we have to keep is our Internet service there. So we'll keep that in the budget. We'll keep our Internet going. And we have some things that we paid for. We paid for them in February because the building opened in February. And so some of our contracts go February to February. And so we've got things that are running right now.
Jeannie, you didn't have any staff there, did you?
No. We oversee it and Julie was the actual immediate supervisor of that, but they were supervised on a day-to-day basis by the Bureau of Tourism. And the staff there were contracted with the Bureau of Tourism.
And is the Historical Society still using it?
Yes, the Historical Society is still there. Everything's there. It's just closed.
And the courtyard is in construction or finished?
Yes. No, the courtyard is under construction. I check the cameras every day and and they're proceeding. Let me see, let me find you a picture real quick. I've got that. I take a picture every day off my, off the security cameras. And it's fine today.
Order clarification. Was the entire budget for that, for the Wellwood completely wiped out or was it cut? And my follow-up question, that would be, is there enough money in there so that when you reopen, you might be able to actually bring that back online? Am I making sense?
Well, the library is just on pause. So it's not, it's not shuttered forever. It's just like a big long Sunday. So it's, it's closed. And when we do get the opportunity to reopen, we'll just open it up again and it'll, it'll be where it is. We've canceled the newspapers and magazines because that's a waste. And even here, we've canceled our newspapers, except for one copy of The Desert Sun. So there's no point in us getting, paying $1,200 a year for The New York Times when we know when we reopen, we won't have newspapers for the public. So we're going to save a lot of money by canceling. We've, I mean, the LA Times and the New York Times are so expensive. So here's a picture. I think you can see it, right? There's a screenshot of the patio. They're building out the planter and they've got the wall constructed around the air conditioner unit. And it looks like they're starting to frame in some of the back, the landscaping around them, around the windows in the building.
Wow. Can't believe it. Never thought I would live to see that, for sure. Any, any other questions or follow-up for Jeannie, anyone? Thank you, Jeannie. So you guys will recall at the, the meeting in this, let's see, we're in July, the first of June, you charged me with following up with the city to find out how are, how the endowment is managed. And the assurance is that trustee Kelly was looking for that those funds are kept separate. And I went to Marcus, as you guys have seen, we've shared the email with you, and asked him, because he did speak to us that day, and I followed up with him just a couple of days after that. What he sent back to us, if you can see from his notes, is the actual resolutions that show where he actually brought to our attention in his response how the Section 2A of one of the resolutions, how the trustees manages and controls the library trust fund and how the funds are kept separate. So I, I know you guys have had time to review this. Is, is this what we're looking for? Or do we require any more follow-up with the city manager or assistant city manager?
Well, I actually have some comments about this because you may recall that before you sent out your email to assistant manager, that I sent you an email as well that listed a number of resolutions. And it came from primarily a packet that Jeannie had given us when I was joining the Board of Trustees, that, that included a letter from then city attorney Doug Holland and referenced a number of resolutions. And what I thought was rather odd was that the, the packet that Jeannie had didn't match what the city manager gave us. They were different resolutions. So I didn't know what to make of that. And and then also, I don't know if we plan on discussing this, but part of the package in here, there are several pages that I think, beginning on page 23,
Which resolution?
That have various numbers from the city accounting. And there are a couple of lines that reference the library. I don't know, is there somebody who's prepared to discuss those numbers? Or, because I'd never seen them before.
So are you on resolution number 17193? Is that the one you're talking about?
So the, the last part that I'm talking about is the numbers that I just referenced on page, beginning on page 23 of the package.
So this resolution is related to the entire city budget, the entire thing. So resolute, starting on page 21, resolution 17193, it does, it talks about a budget for the fiscal year has been prepared. And then I do talk about the library trust. So this resolution is related to the entire city. And, but they do call out the trust fund and they, but then they call out the Public Arts Fund and different things. All those numbers are the city's budget.
Okay, so what you're saying is that page 23 and onwards is just an attachment to this resolution 17193, which appears on page 21.
That's right. Yeah, that's part of that.
Okay, so that's instructive because the numbers that were being presented there, you know, I don't know, if you want to look at it from my perspective, page 23, line number 271 said library. And
Yeah, and that's my account number. My account number is 2710. So that.
Right, right, which is the city expenditures. It didn't look anything like what we were doing. And then also, there was a number on page 28 that had library trust fund. And so yeah, I didn't know what to make of that. I suppose it would have been interesting if we had a a representation that looked like that for the current period because then, I mean, I think trustee Wormick had said a couple of weeks ago, I, you know, in one of our last meetings, that one of the things that I think compelled her to want to keep the trust where it is, is the fact that the city is, or at least the airport trusts the city with millions of dollars. And I was like, looking at this and I could see that there was millions of dollars on this report for the, the airport. So but this is like, this is not relevant because at the top of this, I guess, is 1991 or something to that effect.
Yeah, I was, I was 18 years old. So the, the cities moved on to now a 288-page document. So let me, so the there's a link, the, the city posts their budget book now. And it's very much more detailed, but I think that you can still search on the library trust fund still shows up. On page 181. So they're just, they do include the library trust fund in the budget book, but they list it as 80, usually $8,500. Let me share this screen with you too. This is the city's current budget book. And I did a search for library trust and our, your library trust fund account is 2752. And it does list some of the things that you've done over the years. Each year they adopt. And what's interesting, you'll see, remember I said the Friends, the Friends have like a hundred dollar budget just to keep that account open? Well, there's a hundred dollars right there. And then 8,500 is usually what they estimate your interest income is going to be. So they budget that amount. And that's, it is included in the budget book. It's just not as detailed as maybe it was in 19, and I don't know what they did in 1990 that they gave the city 30-some thousand dollars. It's possible they gave that money for books or something. And then back then, the way it was handled was that they transferred it from the trust fund and put it into the library's account somehow and spent it. I'm not really sure. But this, you are included in the budget book. You do have your own page for the library endowment fund and it's listed in the
That's an interesting page, but I, it just raises questions because why, why is our page up there to begin with? I guess because all the numbers are flowing through there, but I don't, you know, to, to the extent that I don't see, you know, $2 million in there. Was there $2 million in that page somewhere?
No, you wouldn't. It's just. It's just what they budgeted to, so that, so they don't get into details on your, your expenditures. They just say, this is what we budgeted. And it's for transparency because they list all the special funds in the budget book. So you're listed, you're in account. It's not hidden. It's transparent. And it doesn't list all of your, your cash, but it does list what they budget for you.
So I guess then, because I thought this is what you were showing us, but now it's making sense. Under the current budget, where would we be able to see what we're just talking about here, what they showed us in resolution 17193? Would there be a current representation of what, that the trust fund is sitting over here, but it's still considered one of those special funds? Is there a document that shows that now?
I'm not sure how they write the resolutions now. If they get into that detail, I don't know. That would be a question for the clerk, I think.
Yeah, go back and ask that question to Marcus. Can he maybe tell you or show you where that is and or show us?
You know, we could ask the city clerk, because the city clerk holds all, all the resolutions for the city. And so it's possible that that they've changed the way that they write the resolutions, so it wouldn't include that. I'm not sure what it looks like now when they adopt the budget. It might even be, and a lot of their stuff is, they're very transparent. This, you know, we at the city are very transparent. And all of those resolutions might, they should be on there somewhere because they have like the council meeting agenda archives. And if, when the resolution's passed, I would think that it would be available online. I'm just looking right now, but I don't want to see anything.
It's like, it's like a, we kill the layers away. So really, the question that we need to ask is, can someone show us the current budget resolution that shows the library endowment special fund and how it's, it's kept separate? Kept separate from the rest of the budget, like the airport fund, right? That's really what we want, is an assurance to see that it is kept separate, it's not co-mingled at all.
I'm not sure if the current resolutions include that. They might just reference the budget book and the budget was just passed last night, so their resolutions are done.
Well, I mean, it could be even last year, not necessarily this year, just, I think.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I'll make a note and we'll, we'll ask the clerk, the city clerk. The resolutions look like.
And I have to say that the resolution that he shared with us seventeen, two, eighty eight. Where was this when we were having the discussion a couple of years ago about the role of the trustees and the role of the city? I don't remember us ever seeing this, this is kind of new to me where, remember we had, we had such a long discussion of months. On the roles and responsibilities of the board of trustees. And it looks like this was really the, what changed that and established the, the department of the library, correct?
Well, and I never have seen this either, but what, what had happened? So the library was its own entity. And then it came in with the city, probably in the seventies and. And then it went in under Parks and Rec for a while. And then I think this is my interpretation of this document. And based on the at sunrise book and the history of Palm Springs Library. The library then became its own department at this time with resolution seventeen, two, eighty eight. And so then it became its own department, the library director became a department head. And what didn't, and reported to the city manager and so on and so forth. So it's possible that at this time that they really called the library trust fund out. Because of all of these things happening.
It, it looks like though it's an authorizing resolution and gives. Certain powers to the library trustees. So one question I had when I looked at that was, has this been amended in any way, or is this our authorizing document?
And I am not certain, but I, I'd never seen it before, so I.
Because this goes back to what I was saying, and I think Ed is kind of adding a little bit to it. So again, there was a, a letter by Doug Holland that was done June seventh, two thousand and fifteen, which kind of goes with your timeframe, Ed, I think. In terms of when these things were being discussed, and at that time, that's when all of those resolutions were attached. And oddly enough, the ones that our assistant manager gave us wasn't among them. So, and I, actually, if you look at the amendments a little closer too. The ones that he presented to us. And. And I'm assuming that th- these were presented by him. That there's actually pencil notes in there, it looks like it actually shows a little bit of legislative history with. Resolution numbers that preceded the one that's actually being presented here. And then oddly enough, the nineteen seventy five resolution, which was eleven, four, thirty one, I don't think I found on any of those pages. So. I think we're still stuck with an issue here about. And unfortunately, probably an additional issue. My thoughts have been that if we ever got to the point. That we were going to pull these funds from the city. That we would probably want to consider hiring outside counsel to do it. And the more I see all of these legal documents all over the place, I'm thinking that there might need to be a legal review about what we're up to here. But I think that might be for another debate, and I certainly would rather write a memo talking about the history of these things. Before I recommend that.
Well, one thing I wanted to suggest is you can go to our accessing the past website, www dot accessing the past dot org. And we have our at sunrise. History of the library as one of our featured items. And. You can click, click on it, you can keyword search it and. Read it online unless, if you have the physical copy, you could read that too, but that one, it's keyword searchable, so. I was going to look up reso.
Well, I mean, I think that for me, there's a couple of follow up questions to Marcus, maybe the city clerk as well. When this particular document, has it been amended? Over the years. Right? Because, I mean, for example, Jeannie, I mean. Section two F, the library board shall manage all library facilities. I've never heard that before. I mean, I thought that, you know, what does that mean? I mean, remember we started talking about the, the whole building program? We formed a special committee of the, of the community. And it really, it was very clear to us that we really would, didn't have that kind of say and oversight over facilities. This makes me think that, well, do we? You know what I mean? I mean, we were told that, no, I mean, you can make recommendations, but when it comes to the actual. You know, this building, you have no responsibility. This is kind of news to us, right?
Well, you can't, I don't think, it doesn't say anything about managing staff, right? It just says.
Well. Well, it does say.
Right, but. Yeah.
Well, and now the library board shall develop and amend long and short term library plans, well, at least, you know, we have done that, right? I mean, we were.
And you help us write our policies, use, we, we send, we bring our policies to you, policies and procedures and. Fee changes and whatnot. The city does have a master fee schedule, which is what they're referencing there, so. We. You would periodically review those.
Well, the city manager, clearly you report to the city manager and all the responsibility of staff and employees flows into, through you to him, right? So that, under section three, that, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, and three C, that the city manager shall direct the coordination of library departmental activities. And apply city procedures required of other city departments.
But we, we have, we have the authority for library fines, fees and charges, so that, that side of it, correct? I mean, this was, that, that part of it there. So I mean, I think, so the question for me is, has this been amended? Since it was, was approved back in nineteen ninety on this document?
Well, the only thing I can conclude is that if the city attorney in his review in twenty fifteen didn't pick it up, then clearly. He didn't find this document compelling. Whether or not he knew this document existed is another story.
I'm the city librarian and I didn't know this document existed.
So as, as trustee, I don't know if we, you've answered our questions or maybe we've answered some and we, and it results in more. I personally feel like, and I think we discussed this last time, I, I support that right now today, with all this going on in the world. Leaving the trust fund with the city seems to make the most logical sense. I, I do feel confident that it, it's kept separately, we have ultimate control over it as a board. And I, I, I don't question that anymore, but, you know, do you guys feel like we have enough from these documents? That we feel one hundred percent that that's the case? Because that's what we started out for, and do we want to follow up with any more questions with the, with the city manager?
I would just like to know if there's any amendments to this resolution.
I would too. And I, I wrote that down to ask about that.
I think also. One of the things I'd like to know too, is now that there's been a budget that's been passed. I'd like to know how much of the, the, you know, multi-million dollar rainy day fund has been liquidated to cover whatever budget deficits were arising. From it. I'd like to know what the city's cash balance is at this point.
They said their reserve was twenty two million last night and it was, it was on, you can see it on YouTube.
They were able to preserve a twenty two million dollar reserve even after cutting the budget?
It, but the reserve is restricted reserve and it's basically for CalPERS for pensions. So it, I think they could tap into it if they had to. But it's a restricted, it's generally a restricted reserve for a specific purpose.
Well, I do recall, our, one of our council members, I believe it was Councilman Middleton, was quoted in the newspaper saying. Months ago. Thank goodness we have a rainy day fund. This is, couldn't be a rainier day than this, so. Which, which, I understand that there might be an, also a retirement fund. But I, I wanted to know what, what is that money that she was referring to?
She was referring to about forty seven thousand dollars they used to plug some of the holes. They used all of their unrestricted reserves. To cover last year and this year. They had about sixty seven thousand dollars, I believe. And they used, they used everything that was not a reserve. Specifically for CalPERS, for employee pensions. Those monies were used.
Did you say thousands and not millions?
Millions, sorry. No, it's, it was thousands, I'm just trying to think, there's twenty.
It was million.
It's not millions. It, I think what they left in the CalPERS reserve was twenty two thousand. I think it was twenty, it's not twenty two million.
It is, it's twenty two million because they didn't trigger the super majority vote.
But if not millions, I, I don't believe that.
Yeah, it's millions. We had almost seventy million in reserves.
Oh, you're, maybe it's twenty two, it might be twenty two million, you're right, sorry.
Well, in any case, I'm certainly looking forward to reviewing those numbers.
There isn't, but there isn't a rainy day fund left. Although I believe they could use that because it was a discretionary reserve they put in place. And they were intending to use it until they decided to not go forward with the downtown park last night.
So I don't know if there's, I don't think there's a motion to be put on right now, I guess it says just a directive to ask either, I don't know. Ed was the last person to communicate with the, the city manager, assistant city manager, Jeannie, the offer to, to look into the numbers. I guess we'll confer about this in September.
Yes, this is a follow up to that email from Marcus, okay?
And who follows up with the amendments to the resolution?
Someone should follow up with the city attorney on that.
I'm going to reach out to the city clerk because the city clerk holds all the resolutions. And they can tell me if that one was amended afterwards, because they're tied together in some way.
And then based on what you find, then we, we can direct the, the city attorney into the city manager.
Right.
All right, moving along, seven C, library reopening plan, you've had some discussion already in your remarks, Jeannie, is there anything you'd like to add to?
Right, so the, I did attach my proposed plan somewhere in here, page. Thirty one. I do like having the document electronically, it's very handy. So we had the fire department do a check of our building capacity and. They told us our capacity for the library is a hundred and ten people. And if the city or county or state requires a forty percent, forty, forty percent capacity, that would be forty four people. Inside the library and that should include the staff as well. So that's why the capacity listing here in this reopening plan is only forty four people. And when you take out our staff, we're talking, you know, thirty people. We are, we've already moved a lot of furniture, we removed extra chairs around tables. So that there would only be one chair at a table, we've got signage prepared. We're working to get the library ready to open because we thought we were going to reopen right away. So we've got our hot off the press books all spread out on tables flat. So that, I, I don't know if you noticed before, our hot off the press was on circular display tables. And so people would hover around together and browse all of those books. And so we wanted to spread it out, and so we did. And then our new book area, we spread that out around the fish pond. And then we've got a plan, we've got red X's on computers to block off every other one. So we know which, which computers would be used, which chairs will be available. The rest of the furniture is put into the learning center, our community room, because we don't expect to be using that anytime soon. So we put a lot of our. Extra chairs into storage. We spread out our lounge furniture. So that when people do come in and need to sit down, they would only have one chair in their area. Accommodations would be made for families, if there was a family together, they could move chairs together and, and things like that. We've got. A plan to have hand sanitizer at the door. Adding, it wasn't part of this plan, but recent, last, as of last night, talking about making appointments for people to come in is a great option. And we're, we've got that designed. And let me see, the friends of the library did come in and they put colored dots on the, on the spines of the books for the friends book sale. Area so that we wouldn't have to open each book to look at the price. We could look at the dots and do the math. And then people could hand us their money, if they have exact change, they could put it in the donation bin. If they need to use our credit card machine, they would and cash would be acceptable. We are canceling all programming, in-person programming, but we are still working with our YouTube channel and. Are going to be developing some more programming for that, now that we've gotten through this hurdle of the budget. We can get focused again on serving the public. So I'm happy to answer questions if you have any questions about this or suggestions.
Basically, this is on, on hold right now, right? I mean. No idea.
Yeah. Yeah, and we just want to be ready, we want to be ready so that when they say go, it's, it's easy to just go.
I noticed here you're not taking temperatures of people coming in for staff.
Well, it, it depends on what happens, if, if we're told to do that by the county, then we would do that. If we become a cooling center, I think that's one of the newest procedures that they've added to their list of tasks that you have to do. And so we would probably become a cooling center and we would probably have to add that as something that we do. We are taking staff temperatures. We have a station inside that each person has to take their temperature when they arrive. And if they have an elevated temperature, they have to sanitize their space and immediately leave. Not even come and tell us, just go home and call us.
Well, of course, if they're not wearing a mask, you can't allow them in because none of the.
Correct, that's right, where we are monitoring at the door and if people with, are not wearing masks, they will not be admitted. If someone says they need a special accommodation, we would get the items for them, we would. We'll take that one, one step at a time.
But I am surprised, I, I, I agree with, with trustee Borba that I'm surprised you're not, you know. We're checking temperatures on everybody who comes at our door. I think, you know, why, why wouldn't you do that?
That might be something that we do, it's, it wasn't included in the plan. The situation that we have right now with our thermometers is that you have to get within a half inch to two inches of someone's forehead. And that's a lot, that's very close for strangers to interact. And so.
Well, we're doing it behind. Well, so my staff stand behind plexiglass and. You're around the, to get it, it's, and we've kind of worked that out where they're not getting close to anybody.
And that may be what we're doing too, we have plexiglass here, we've got more. I hope, I'm pretty sure they're going to order more for us because our, our service desks are so huge.
Exactly.
And we're ordering decals for the floor too.
Lot of here, everywhere.
Jeannie, are you worried if people come in about them touching books?
There, I'll talk about the study when we get to that, but yes, we're concerned. We are planning to have carts strategically placed in several spots so that people. And we're trying to, we'll, we'll be educating people when they come through the door. Over and over and over in signage and things like that, to ask people to limit the touching of the items. That's why we're putting the, the most popular books are hot off the press. Flat on tables with their covers facing up. flat on tables with their covers facing up so that uh, someone can actually just look at the covers. And if maybe they could raise the flap of the book uh, to read the jacket without having to pick up the whole book. And then when someone's done with that book and they decide they don't want it or that DVD, then they should put it on the cart. And then we are going to um, clean up, clean those with a cleaner on the outside. So when items are coming back to the library right now, they're being quarantined for three days. And we turned off our book machine. They're going straight into the slot. And that way, the book machine doesn't push them or sweep or disturb the air with the books. They're going straight into quarantine three days, and then at that time, we turn on the machine to run them through and check them in.
I have a couple of comments. Actually, um, I'm a little concerned about the calculus or the the math that went into forty people. The uh, you know, at a time in there, I understand you said that there was a hundred and ten that was set, I guess, by the fire department, I suppose.
Yes.
Which must be for the main part of the building because the learning center accommodates that many too. So um, uh, and I, you know, and I would kind of say, you know, maybe that number is a little small. I mean, I've seen meeting, you know, I understand meeting spaces, like I said, the learning center probably has about that many for a capacity. And you're talking about a lot of square footage where even when you when people are distancing, you can probably put more than a, you know, a hundred and ten people in that large main library section. So um, and because I'm concerned that you, you know, you mentioned these concerns that there was risks at the page uh, page thirty three about people queuing up and upset that the building is at capacity. And uh, my concern is that it doesn't, this doesn't uh, address people who may make extended stays. And and you know, and frankly, if this ends up being a cooling center, how are you going to justify removing people so that that, you know, everybody gets a chance to to use a library? Um, and on top of that, if people know it is a cooling center, then uh, I would almost say that you might want to start prioritizing the entrance, the entrance so that um, if it's a particularly hot day and you see people who are outside who want to just browse books, I would say I would rather let the people in to cool off than and tell them the other people that they could always go online to find books and uh, and do this library a go-go function. So that's that's going to be tricky, you know. Fortunately, that's just something to think about at this point because there's no chance near future, in my opinion, that this library is going to open. I'm also concerned about the children's library as well. I don't think there's really much here that talks about um, uh, access to the books for children. I know that there was something about unaccompanied uh, children, and that was going to be prevented for a certain age. But you know, children are a little messier than most of us. And uh, to actually, I don't know if there's a provision here for monitoring of the children's library so that uh, you know, that messiness is taken into account. There's nothing in here I don't see about uh, whether or not there's volunteers are going to be allowed to do volunteer work uh, in the library. You just mentioned that the the friends have actually had access to the library to to mark off their books. I don't know whether or not you intend on having other volunteers to come into and do library work. I'm happy to hear about the Plexiglas. You know, and and then uh, this also doesn't take into account. I don't see the word about anything about homeless populations in here. And everybody knows that homeless populations are are always a part of library consideration. So I think not mentioning them at all in this document is just leaving questions as to whether or not we're being naive. I don't know that there's going to be homeless people here. So um, but like I said, I mean, we've we've got time for this, so. Oh, and one last comment too. And I know and I know you're going to go into this when you talk about the decontamination approach for the library materials. But um, you know, I think a lot of us are being asked to to do things like uh, wear masks and and wash our hands and use sanitizer. These are things that when we're always touching surfaces that we're, you know, that we're going to have to be accountable for. And I think even, you know, I don't know too many people, adults that is, that when they take a book back from the library are gonna, you know, think it's so cool and they can eat off of it. So um, you know, I think we'll all be taking precautions when we're reading library books about making sure our hands are cleaned after we're through reading the book or putting it away or whatever like that. But I don't think that's the case for children. So I'm kind of thinking that maybe uh, to lessen the burden on this library staff. And I don't know if anyone else is considering this, but really the the most extreme measures to uh, sanitize books, I think really should be limited to uh, children and youth books because they don't have that kind of capability to think about uh, washing their hands and wearing a mask and stuff like that. And you know, this whole thing about uh, having a a shelf, uh, something so that uh, people can re-shelve the books that, you know, your staff can re-shelve the books if somebody just happens to touch it, look at it, and then decide they don't want to check it out. I think that's so burdensome uh, for the staff. I just the idea of you collecting books and then putting them in a box and then not emptying the box for three days is kind of crazy to me too. So especially for adult books. I, you know, I'm just thinking that maybe that ought to be just a consideration for children's books and not for adult books. So those are my ideas. Thank you.
Well, the reason why we're standing where, um, the reason why we're quarantining the items that are coming from the public is because of COVID. And um, and I'll talk about that again. But um, for the for the re-shelving of the items, I did reach out to the Ranch Mirage Library Director. We've had a couple of conversations about his service and how they're handling it. And are people really following the rules about don't re-shelve your books? Go ahead and put it on the special cart. And parents are, they're helping their children to educate them and guide them about how to do this. And so uh, for the uh, the books that we're we're dealing with, I mean, we we take this seriously. And uh, I don't want, uh, if we if we could take a moment to just wipe down the book and then re-shelve it, and that uh, saves a life, then we're going to do it. We're gonna, we're gonna do that uh, as best as we can. To answer some of your questions about um, the square footage, I mean, yeah, I I get it with the the capacity is really low. And I uh, worked with the fire inspectors that to ask the them to calculate the square footage, the the square footage form, and that's to calculate the occupancy. They asked me, just give me the square footage of your main room. Don't give me the side rooms. And so I did. And the reason why it's pretty low is because of all the book stacks. I asked that question. I said, why it? Why is it so low? And they said, it's because of the book stacks. Uh, they have to take that into account account when they do that. And you're right, the learning center capacity is ninety, and it's a very small room. The capacity at Wellwood is, I think, ninety, and it's a really small library compared to our library. So I was really surprised at the number two. So uh, I'm just, that's what the fire department told us, so that's that's what we're going to use. But as far as volunteers, oh, go ahead.
You're you're deducting the staff from the forty four, and the staff is not in the main library. They're in the rooms outside of the main library. So I'm just.
That's not necessarily true. Uh, we've got a lot of people who are gonna, we're gonna have a a door attendant, a self-check attendant, a computer attendant, a couple of people at the customer service desk, a reference librarian. So I just counted six.
Right.
Probably, oh, a security guard, hopefully, that's seven. Me, Lisa, my operations manager. I mean, now we're talking about eight people roaming the floor, trying to make sure that people do what they're supposed to do. And um, so, you know, it could be eight people easily at all times uh, out there on the floor. But yeah, I see what you're saying about the people in the side offices. But uh, we'll have a lot of people out there on the floor as well. So um, and then volunteers, yeah, the the only person that there were only two people that came in. And they're um, they're the ones doing the books sale. They don't come in all the time. They just they just came in to do that special project because we said, hey, we're going to be opening soon. And they came in and did that. But we will not have volunteers either, I don't think, at this time. Um, I'm a volunteer at the hospital, Desert Regional, and um, I've been not volunteering since March. So they don't, it it's not anything that we're uh, it's not worth it to have people take, you know, risk it to come out to to help us. For the like priority access, I mean, that's maybe how the um, the reservation system might work. And maybe we 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 um, divide up that uh, available attendance by letting only so many people come in for browsing and so many for computer and then some for cooling center. And that would help, I think, for um, for the different populations that come in. And um, speaking about homeless population, we don't we don't specifically call them out because everybody's a user at the library and we don't, we we're not. It doesn't matter where you come from or where your house. We want everyone to feel welcome and and able to come in and and use the library for whatever you need to use it for. So that's why it's not specifically called out. We did call out unaccompanied minors because that was a discussion with other libraries as well that what if what if school comes back in session and, you know, I'm next to high school? High school kids could be allowed in individually, but um, it was kind of decided that middle school and down, they might not have the um, decision-making skills that a more mature person would have. And so we think that they need to come with their parents. And uh, yeah, because I I don't know if you've ever worked with middle schoolers. They sometimes don't follow rules.
Jeannie, can you use the learning center as your cooling center so that you have a separate space and maybe a separate door for people to come in to cool off?
We've talked about that. That's kind of an option too. Uh, right now it's full of furniture. So but we can move that around. Uh, so we uh, we thought about it. It's a small room too. So then you've got people in a small space. And so we were thinking that in the main room, it's a much more open space. And so people would have the ability to spread out more. So we've got the seating capability in the main room for those forty. And with Ranch Mirage too, talking to them, they they're only seeing about fifteen to twenty people at any one time. However, they are just doing the grab and go walkthrough. They don't have any chairs or computer service um, right now. So uh, we would, this is all fluid, and we would play it by ear and see what happens. And if it if it's, uh, if there's a huge demand, maybe we need to look in other facilities in the city. Maybe the maybe the pavilion could become cooling center. And then we could focus more on computer access and whatnot. But sometimes people using the computers are there to cool also, so they don't, you know, double service.
Will you become a um, area for voting in November?
I think that is true. Those um, the registrar of voters told me that um, they are doing vote by mail only, but they are looking for voter information centers that, um, not a polling place, but a place where someone could go to get to get help. Because I work the election too. After after the polls close, I work at the election collection center where all the precincts bring the ballots to to me and my team. It's a side uh, side service. And so I would, uh, I was asking about the polling places. And I think, I mean, we'll probably still be one that service of the voter information center. But I don't think they're going to have polling places this time.
You want to continue talking to us about the uh, web junction article in Realm?
Sure. So in, I mean, the page is at page thirty four. Yes, thirty four of your packet. The Institute of Museum and Library Services uh, funded a study with Batel. They do, I've never heard of them before, but they do studies and scientific studies. And so they specifically did the study to test uh, COVID nineteen on library materials. And so the round one of the study was to test it on five items, hardback book covers, paperback book covers, the pages within a closed book, plastic book coverings, those are the plastic book jackets, and then the DVD case, which is also plastic. And so um, they found that the COVID nineteen virus was not detectable on the materials after three days of quarantine. And I found it really fascinating how they did it. They cut pages out of books uh, for the paper study. They called them coupons, and they uh, they uh, adhered the virus to the coupons and then stuck them back in the books and closed the books and let them sit just like a a regular book. If you were reading a book at home and you copped in the book and then returned it to the library, what what it would look like. And they found that um, everything looked like it was clear after three days. Looks like they did. They ran the test two times. And so the because they, they wanted to check it from zero days to six days. And that that one, by six days, everything was gone. So then they ran another study to determine what happens in those shorter timeframes. And it looks like by day three, everything's gone. So that's a great confirmation for us that we're doing the right thing to quarantine the items. And that gives us the time to let them sit. We don't have to even clean the items. Although I do recommend people to take a little cleaner to the outside of your book or DVD because just general grime on library materials builds up. And and kids' books are are the worst, but also adult books and DVDs get really grimy. So uh, I recommend that if you're taking something home from us that has been quarantined, feel free to quarantine it yourself if you want uh, or use some cleaner on it. Don't obviously don't drench a book or uh, if it's a if it's a delicate soft cover, I wouldn't use a lot of cleaner. You might spray it onto a paper towel or use a wipe and then disinfecting wipe and then wipe the outside. And that helps us too because then our items get clean. So I'm happy to answer questions about this there.
Is the plastic clean after three days as well?
Yes.
It's clear.
Yeah. And I was a little disappointed in the charts because they used two shades of blue, and it's really hard to tell which one's which. But I think that the plain paper pages are the ones that had the virus strength the most as opposed to the hardback book cover. It looks like if you zoom into that document, that the hardcover book is the second one, the one that it's the one that drops down immediately on one on one day. But the other blue line stays elevated a little bit until day three.
Very nice.
We dreamed we'd be looking at things like this.
I know, and they're doing another study. They're still, they're um, they're doing another round of studies to test other um, other products, like the actual disc, the DVD within the case. So they're doing some more studies, but that was, those were the quickest, the things we needed to know the most and the fastest. So it took a long time to get that, but we're glad to, we're glad to know.
Thank you. Any questions for Jeannie?
I love when we, I love when we use signs to make decisions.
All right, Jeannie, so talk to us about the uh, PR campaign. As I told you earlier, I saw the commercial this morning on Channel Three. It looked really good.
Okay, so um, we're working with KESQ. Uh, they're doing a matching um, time slots for us. So we're, uh, we, the trustees are you are paying uh, three thousand dollars for the TV ads to run for three months. And they're matching that dollar for dollar. And I have the ad. I can show it to you if you'd like to see it. I'm going to share my screen again. And I'm going to hit replay. Hopefully the volume is, I hope that you can hear it. Can you hear it? Hold on. Let me start over. Start over. Okay.
No volume.
No? Hold on. Hold on. Let me try this. So can you hear? Could you hear that? Okay, I'm gonna start over. And turn it up.
So this will run for three months?
Yes, July, August, and September. And it's 120 slots. So mostly, I think, morning, morning times, I think, is when they're scheduled. But it'll only be on KESQ. I asked about that, if it was going to be on other channels, but they're, they're focusing only on that channel.
He put the link in the chat box?
It's a, it's a private preview right now, so. It is, but it's private. It was just, it was just a test for us to, to see.
So they're not going to post it at all online?
I would have to find, I'd have to get permission to see if I can do that.
I think it's great to see on social media, especially on your Facebook page.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I'll ask, but it, like I said, it's proprietary with KESQ. They created it, and I'd want to make sure they're okay with that.
Really silly that they wouldn't want to promote it further.
When we did our commercial with them, we were able to do anything we wanted to with it. Now, of course, if we were paying for it, I bet they will let you put it on your Facebook page at least.
Yeah, I'll, I wrote it out, I'll ask.
And if they say yes, please send us an email with a link, I'd love to promote it.
Yeah, thanks.
So, thank you. Any questions for Jeannie on the TV commercial? Like I said, I saw it this morning, it was, it was like right before Good Morning America. The slot you got this morning. Item number 7F. As you guys know, in the past, we have been dark in August. We haven't discussed it because we've been needing through technology. So do we want to be dark in August or do we want to have another meeting?
Is there any businesses pending that needs to be discussed before September?
Well, the only other thing that would be is the next item, which is the promissory note with the foundation. But I don't know if we necessarily need to, I guess we could call, well.
Can I recommend that we actually move 7F to, for a discussion after we're done with 7G?
Yeah, well, let's, let's do that. So let's get down to the promissory. So unfortunately, guys, we just got this like, what, 15 minutes before our meeting?
Yeah.
And I, I've read through it as quickly as I possibly could. I don't know if any of the rest of you have had any chance to absorb it or not.
I, I didn't even send it to David Sidley, I'm sorry, we'll do that, too.
There needs to be a correction on David's title. At the bottom of the page.
I'm sending it to David Sidley, too.
Which office of the city did this note come from?
This came from the city manager, no, city attorney, sorry. Oh, yeah, there is a typo.
My initial mantle is very much like the last one.
It's identical, except for the dollar amount.
Yeah.
And the names of the people signing it.
I did not see as part of the, the note that, that we agreed for a payment, but maybe it's not necessary to include that. But we did, you know, agree to a $10,000 payment from the foundation.
Well, it's impossible to roll over a note to $80,000 without having a payment.
Right. So shouldn't the payment be noted in this document at some point?
No, it never does. It's, what, what happens is when they sign, when you sign this document, you're supposed to pay $10,000 with it so that it can retire the note.
But to me, that was the only other thing here. Another question, again, like I said, I read it as quickly as I possibly could. What do you guys like to do? Would you like to have some time to absorb and have questions? Or do you think you've looked at it enough and we're ready to send this one back?
If this is identical to the other one, except for the dollar amount, I'd like to move that we approve this.
I, I would recommend it, too, as long as Mr. Sidley is on board with us, because he has to sign it.
And he just got it a minute ago.
Yeah, so I need, I can't, I need to look at it. I just got it about two seconds ago.
So is there any need to, you know, as long as the note adheres to whatever the city, city attorney needs and is in line with, with what we had approved and that's noted in the last minutes, I don't see why this isn't something that between our president and Jeannie and Mr. Sidley that they couldn't do without any necessary, any other approvals by the board. I mean.
I agree with that.
Yeah, we, we gave approval for this, you just need to execute.
Yeah.
So I'll work with David, give him time, of course, to review and have any questions. And then Jeannie will come back to you and have you finalize it with the city attorney. And I think we'll be ready to go. It's okay with the board. That's good.
Do you need a vote on that or not?
No motion.
Okay.
So with that, do we feel like we have any business that we need to meet and discuss in August at this point?
Jeannie, you're okay with us disappearing for August?
Yes.
Don't do that with a smile.
Smile too broadly.
I will miss you very much.
The one thing that could happen, of course, between now and September is you could get the release to open, right? So you could be in full swing to open. Budget's done. We know what our budget request will be from you until the, until September at this point, right? We'll work on that for the next 30, 45 days.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. We're, today's day one of the year, and we've got, we've got so much to do. And I feel like this, August is a great time to take a little break and, and you all just relax one month.
I would say that, let's say, you have an emergency in August, and there's something terrible that does happen and you do need funds from the trust, you would just need to call a special meeting for us to discuss them. But at this point, I don't think that would happen. I mean, you could get by until we meet again in September, but.
Yeah, and our friends at the library have also offered, too. They said they can do an email vote and if there's something that pops up as an emergency. Oh, can you, do you remember what we were doing a year ago? Building committee?
Yeah.
We spent our entire August in like eight meetings, August and September.
It seems like so far away, but it wasn't really, you know, you think about it. I guess the question, the Measure J funds for the library projects, they still stand, right? I mean, I didn't, I didn't hear anything taken out from that.
No, they canceled them. Yeah. Although we, you know, we have, oh, that's not Mr. J, I'm starting to say Wellwood Patti, but that's not Mr. J. But, yeah, they, they canceled the, the project right now.
All right, so.
The, the park space is available now?
The park space?
They're not going to build the park, they're not going to build the park?
The downtown park.
Yeah.
No, they're supposed to be, they're going to continue it in some fashion and do something temporary like grass. They'll finish out what they have money to finish and then phase it in, as far as I know.
Maybe the babies are getting older.
But it could have been, you know, I, I know what you're saying. It could be the new library headquarters.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That's a nice spot. We should ask for.
David, how do you like that idea?
I don't think our residents would go for it.
Oh. It was, what's, what they did to the park last night might end the design that people worked on, myself included, for six years.
Excuse me.
Wow, that's tragic.
Wash your hands. And wash your hands.
I'm sorry to hear all that work, but working on a lot of organizations are suffering right now.
And the 700 people or so who took part in the surveys and everything else.
Yeah.
And I so much wanted Marilyn to come back.
And how do we take that? People say that in two different ways, I won't put you on the spot.
I'll tell you offline.
All right, everyone, so thank you.
Did you have any other comments, number eight?
Oh, sorry.
Trustee comments, future agenda items?
We've made some here the last few seconds, right? But does anyone have any comments for the record?
I do think, thinking, thinking with the city council about the park being a future library site is not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't mean we have to close the other one.
Well, I wish everybody a happy, a happy summer. And Jeannie, I hope that your staff has some nice quiet time to get things done.
Very excited to get that, get out on, on social media and YouTube and keep busy with, interacting with people online.
The budget behind you can breathe now and focus on what you've got to do to build the program for the year, right? So it's going to give you some time to do that.
Do we know if the schools are going to open yet?
On the school I drive past every day, the sign says, "Open August 5th." But Craig, you might know, I don't.
Yeah, they, they don't know how they're going to do it yet. They're offering independent study or online education for some and in-class for others. But I don't think it's been finally voted on by the board yet.
And like I said, it could change at the last minute, too.
You bet, based upon what the governor says. Everybody stay safe, huh?
Yes.
All right, so let's see, our meeting then in September will be, September the 2nd. Correct, Jeannie?
Yes, my, my wedding anniversary.
Great way to spend the evening, right?
Yes, with the ones I love. No, I'm kidding.
What do you mean you're kidding? You should love them.
You're not kidding.
Let's end this recording, no, let's.
Thank you, guys, and I'd like Kathy, have a great summer.